All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to start each segment with the candidates giving an opening statement, and then we'll ask a series of questions, and then there will be a closing statement. So if you would like to introduce yourself, and you have two minutes for an opening statement, and the timekeeper is right off to your left there.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. It's great to see you. I'm glad that you made it. It is a little treacherous out there, and I appreciate you waiting. My name's Teresa Mosquera, and I'm running for Seattle City Council, position eight, citywide. I have lived in this neighborhood. The most recent apartment that I owned before my place that I'm currently in was just about four blocks from here. Aretha Basu, my campaign manager, lives just about four blocks from here this way. And this is the second time I've lived in West Seattle in my tenure in Seattle. I grew up in this region. My parents are down in Olympia. They are advocates, they are educators. My dad teaches political economy and social change. My mom was an early learning professional, and they both were public servants their entire life. I didn't grow up wealthy, but I did grow up with the opportunity to go to school. After graduating from the University of Washington here, my first job was just down the hill at C-Mar Community Health Centers, where I lived and worked here out of West Seattle. This is the city that I call home. This is a place where we've seen so much prosperity grow up in the last few decades. But I think as we look around Seattle, a lot of us want to see greater shared prosperity, the ability for more of us to be able to afford to live in the city that we work, and to be able to afford to stay here if we retire here. I love the introduction that was given by the gentleman from the Chamber of Commerce. The folks that you said that you represent, I also represent. Teachers, doctors, I have janitors, construction workers, folks who work in the tech industry, folks who are supporting me because they want to see a Seattle that works for everyone. I just got married about a month and a half ago, and my husband and I, we want to be able to afford to live in Seattle. And right now, you look around Seattle, and there's not enough housing for the folks who need to live here. We don't have enough transit to move people in and out of our city. And when we do that, it cripples our local economy. We need to be investing in infrastructure, investing in the ability for small businesses to get off the ground, and the ability for more of us to live in Seattle, work in Seattle, and retire here. That's how we create a healthy, thriving community.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Grant, and thank you so much for having us. This is Teresa and I's second forum for the night, so we're racing to these things left and right. I'd like to tell a little story about an experience that I had as the former director of the tenants' union. My background is largely in affordable housing and homelessness. I used to work at Solid Ground, which is a social service agency. And, you know, when we talk about these issues that our city is facing, it really comes down to power and who holds it. When I was director, there was a group of tenants at the Lockhaven Apartments. This is in Ballard. And their rents went from $900 a month to $3,000 a month when a developer bought that building. That developer was also doing a deal with the city, where the city was going to sell them an entire public block of land to build multimillion-dollar condos. And the tenants thought that it was wrong that the city should sell this public land to a serial evictor of low-income tenants, and that the developers should be held more accountable. Well, the tenants sued the city and sued the developers, and said that it was actually an illegal deal. And at the time, I was running for city council back then, this was in 2015. And that developer actually offered me a bribe. He said, "If you get the tenants to walk back on this lawsuit, we won't spend $200,000 against you in your campaign." This developer was so foolish enough to put that threat in a text message. That text message, you might remember, we sent that to the Seattle Times, and the Seattle Times published a front-page story. The vice president of Triad Capital, which was the company, he got fired. The city killed that $400 million deal, and the tenants got a $5.7 million settlement to go towards affordable housing. That's what leadership looks like, that's what accountability looks like. And that's what it looks like when we can have a community voice on the council to hold these car rental groups accountable. Because rents are going through the roof, homelessness is getting worse, and we have to do something different. Thank you.
Okay, so each of the candidates will have a minute and a half on these questions. So the first question. "In the last two years, the support from the city council and the mayor's office for our neighborhoods and the long-established district council system has eroded dramatically. Will you continue this trend, or do you envision promoting changes?"
So I have worked in building broad coalitions to create policy change my entire life. When I think about what Seattle City Council's roles and responsibility are, is to create policy change rooted in our community values. It's very similar to all the coalitions that I've worked in in the past, asking folks who have actually affected what changes we want to see, how change is affecting our community, and how we can respond. That's how we helped to pass health coverage for all kids. That's how I helped to pass Medicaid expansion in this state. And that's how we were able to successfully pass raising the minimum wage and sick leave for all workers, by asking people directly impacted, "What would you like to see?" That's why when we passed the sick leave initiative, we asked small businesses, "What would work best for you when we phased this in?" And people told us, "Give us eight months, or eight months, give us a year," and we phased it in so that it wouldn't happen right away. When I'm on city council, I want to make sure that the voice of community is actually heard. The voice of neighborhood is actually resonating, not just from city council down, but from community up. So I'd like to do more things, like having meetings in halls just like this, reimbursement for those who need childcare assistance, reimbursement for those who need transportation assistance, and actually think about maybe some wage subsidies for folks who want to come to meetings but have two or three jobs. I think we can do this, diversify the type of voices that we're getting, which we know is one of the goals, but actually create the opportunity for folks to engage in community, not just in city hall, but in meeting rooms just like this.
John?
So, you know, I just want to give a full disclosure. I was actually on the mayor's Hala committee, the Housing Affordability, Livability Committee. Bye-bye.
Go ahead, John.
Testing one, two. There you go. Not sure what happened there. Can I get my two minutes, sir? Thank you. You know, I was on the mayor's housing committee, the Hala committee. And, you know, for those of you that were paying attention, I was one of the one of 28 members on that committee. Over half the committee was represented by the interests of downtown developers. And I don't know about you, but the last time I checked, the seat wasn't made half of developers, right? It's actually over half renters and the rest are homeowners. And when we talk about development in our community, we never had that conversation about livability. The L in Hala was dropped, right? It was more like "ha." If you feel like you're being laughed at, that's why, right? And the result of that is that, you know, we've seen from the mayor's office a hostility towards neighborhoods. They cut funding to the neighborhood councils. They implemented citywide upzones, right? But they never really got the community input right. And I was the one person on that committee to have stayed on a vote, because I wanted to create a space for us to have a conversation about how we could ask for more. I put forward a proposal calling on 25% of all new development to be affordable to working-class people. Right now, the city's proposal is as low as 2% of each building. Two is very close to zero. And this is a big difference between my opponent and I. She believes that 25% is going too far. I think that we need to push the envelope. I think that we need to actually demand more for our communities. Because the grand bargain was what they called it, but it was a bargain for developers, it wasn't a bargain for the community.
Okay, second question, and we'll start with John on this one. "Over the course of the last few years, our West Seattle business community has noticed what appears to be a lack of concern and outreach from the city council over issues such as the city income tax, the business license fee increase, and others. If elected, how will you interact with our West Seattle business community?"
So I've talked to a lot of small business owners, and some of the things that I've heard is that a lot of the time, small business owners' input isn't really taken into consideration until after a policy is implemented. And something that I've heard loud and clear from that same community is that they would really like a stakeholder group, or a task force, or a commission that is comprised of small business owners to bring that unique perspective, right? Not just small businesses like Molly Moon, which are actually fairly large, but even like micro businesses like, you know, the Avola Cafe, which is right across the street from me in Reeder Avenue. I think that we really need to be sensitive to the fact that our policies have impacts on the sustainability of businesses, but at the same time, we have to uphold, you know, the rights of workers. So one thing that I can commit to you is that, you know, we need to put small business owners' voices first. And I'm proud to have the support of small business owners like Solomon at Avola Cafe, and also like the North Star Diner up in Green Lake, and I think at Greenwood, excuse me. And I think that, you know, when we work with small business owners to come up with solutions, we can really do a lot to make our communities prosper, because these are the kind of cultural anchors, right, of our community, and we need to support them.
So there's a number of community organizations that are working to actually help small businesses get their feet off the ground. The Chamber is one of those. But there's also folks like Ventures. Have folks heard of Ventures and Main Street Alliance? They're working to try to get more people to get their business off the ground. They're trying to make sure that women, immigrants, people of color have the chance to start their own business. And they've told me three things. Number one, we need more capital investment programs so that small businesses can get their business off the ground in those especially hard first three years. And I want to see us increase the number of dollars that go to micro lending programs. Number two, they want to create things like we see in Portland. Portland has a Portland Mercado. It's like a large area where people can come together, rent a small space, create their crafts, or maybe create their food in an industrial kitchen, and then go out and sell it. And work with the city to actually create small square footage on the new buildings or old buildings to go in so that we can actually sell our goods in the community. And lastly, they want somebody to help them. Not a task force, not another commission, they want somebody who will be the liaison. I want us to create an actual liaison, two small businesses, so that people can get help through the process. That's what they've asked for. And this is really personal to me. My grandma and grandpa in Des Moines, Iowa, they were able to basically get out of poverty by opening their own restaurant. It's called Tasty Tacos. You ever been to Des Moines, Iowa? They now have seven in one of the hardest industries to actually be successful. 62 years later, Tasty Tacos has allowed for my family to get out of poverty. We can create those opportunities here.
All right. On the table in front of you are two pieces of paper. One says yes, one says no. So we have a quick set of yes-no questions. First question. "Do you support alternatives to light rail in West Seattle?" Gondolas?
Do we get a chance to say that?
No. Okay, the second question. "Would you be in favor of light rail being in a tunnel to the junction of West Seattle? Should public funds be spent to influence the acquisition of a sports team and build an arena?"
My honor, my name.
Depends on how you hold it. "Do you favor a performance-based budgeting that shows revenue sources?" And the final. "Do you support Councilmember O'Brien's proposal to allow RVs and cars to park on city streets with no time limits?"
I'd like to say.
That's the fun part of yesterday's questions. Okay, so we'll start with you on this question, and we'll back to you, I have a minute and a half. "How do you think the city can increase green space in light of all of the development that we are experiencing?"
So my background's in public health. I got my career started at C-Mar, as I mentioned, and worked at the Department of Health after that. Much of the time that I spent at the Department of Health was thinking about how we create walkable, viable communities, healthy, thriving communities, communities that have green spaces, parks, and tree canopies. I am incredibly honored to have the endorsement of folks like TreePac, the Washington Conservation Voters, Sierra Club, people who know that I want to actually maintain trees in the city, increase the number of trees and green spaces, and create more opportunities for us to have play spaces and parks. I still try to play soccer on Wednesdays. Getting out and being active, being in our community and our parks is incredibly important. And we can actually create development done right when we prioritize things, like setbacks from the streets, so that we have sidewalks that have a tree canopy, so that we have enclaves that allow for greater green spaces, so that we're creating affordable housing, mixed-income housing, around places like parks, like plazas, that allow for us to have the benefits of having green space. It is good for our public health, it is good for our mental health when we actually create density, but density done right in a way that creates additional green spaces. That's what I'm doing on the north lot of the old Pacman Tower. You guys familiar with the old tower? It's a parking lot up there. We're creating affordable housing above an adult daycare facility, and a healthcare facility, and a childcare facility all around the plaza. And we're planting 20 more trees. So no trees coming down.
John?
I too am also proud to have the endorsement of the TreePac. They did a dual endorsement at this race. So, you know, I think when we talk about these issues, we have to recognize the impacts that development has, and that our city does not do a good job of requiring developers to replace the trees at the root and get rid of, in lieu of putting up, you know, taller buildings, et cetera. I think the city also struggles because we don't know what trees are out there. The city really doesn't monitor or track that. And I think that as a result, you know, we see a loss in our tree canopy, and then there's no way for us to know that it's happening. So I think the city needs to start tracking the trees that are in our neighborhoods that are subject to being torn out as a result of the growth that we're seeing. The second piece that's going on right now is that we need to keep public land in public hands. And there is a lot of public land that is being sold by Seattle Public Utilities right now. There are parcels of land that, a lot of them are wetlands, quite frankly. And the city is just selling them off because they can make a short-term profit. I think that there are long-term implications to the city by making those decisions. And I think that we should try to, well, not try, I think that we should, make sure that our public utilities and all of our other departments are doing everything we can to not privatize public spaces. And we know that we can do that, right? But it takes political leadership to make that happen. We're seeing this affect other areas, too, where, you know, the Green Lake Community Center and the Evans Pool are looking at being privatized as well. We need to stop that. And I think that's something the city council needs to prioritize.
Okay, we'll start with John on this one. "Do you think the city of Seattle can influence development of workforce housing and infrastructure?"
Yes, and this kind of goes back to that grand bargain that we were talking about, right? So when the city passed these upzones, it was to accommodate the over 100,000 people that are going to be moving to our city in the next two decades. And Seattle has this incredible economic engine. Now, that actually gives us a, you know, a point of leverage with this development to ask for more. This 2% to 7% of affordability is going to yield barely $6,000 in affordable housing. My proposal to raise that requirement up to 25% could really make us true dent in our affordability crisis. But we need to actually push back against this kind of political consensus that, "Well, that's the most that we can ask for, and that's the best that we can do." That 25% affordability requirement, that's your workforce housing. That's housing that can be for low-to working-class, low-income to working-class people. But right now, the city is essentially giving away the farm. And we're seeing that right here in the junction, right? You're seeing all these buildings getting built. Who do we know that can afford to live in them? Not many people. The city can't just be affordable to the tech workers that are moving here. They need to be affordable to the communities that have made this place a great place to live. And we are going to see waves of gentrification. We're going to see waves of generations of Seattleites push out of the city if we aren't taking a firmer hand with development. Development shouldn't be done to you, development should be done for you. And I think that's what the premise of our campaign is about.
So I am so proud to have the endorsement of folks who want to create affordable housing for the workforce in our community. People who are calling for us to create the density, but density done right, so that when we see new buildings go up, it's for middle-income folks like the family that I want to start one day. It's two- and three-bedrooms so that families can afford to live in the city and not have to be commuting for hours to come in. The reason that I think it's important that we build the housing that we need now is because we have a crisis. It is a public health crisis to not have enough housing in our community. It is a crisis if we don't actually develop the housing that our community is calling for. Now, I would love to sit up here and say, "25% sounds good, let's do it." You know what happened in San Francisco when they passed an initiative that required 25%? Housing did not get built. And you know what else happened? That meant the workforce that folks want to house didn't have a place to live. So they had to go back to the drawing board. And yes, they came up with a new number, but they came up with a number that worked in San Francisco. I want us to push forward for as much affordable housing as we can get in each of those upzones, and realize that a lone Hala is not going to solve our problems. That's why I'm calling for us to use the public dollar, invest in more public ownership models through community land trusts, like cohousing. Cohousing models that allow for families to live there, seniors to live there, kiddos to live by their school. This is what it looks like to create affordable housing on our conditions. That's why I think it's important that we have folks who are going to be honest with you and have reasonable and actionable plans that create housing.
And we'll start with Teresa on this one. "How would the opening of the tunnel in 2019 impact your thinking on West Seattle transportation decisions?"
So, given that I lived out here for three years recently, I just moved away in 2013. I know that transportation's even gotten worse since then. What I'd like to see us do is expand the number of rapid-ride buses that are coming in and out of our community, and also think how we can quickly create more innovative transportation options. I've heard a lot about a tunnel that would go from Queen Anne, Ballard area, out to West Seattle if we can actually create that tunnel. That sounds innovative. I'd like to see us work with South Transit to expedite South Transit creation. We know that historically, South Transit has had pretty conservative timelines on when they can create transit lines. I'd like to see how quickly we can work with them. Hopefully, when we win, the Senate Democrats win over the Senate chamber there in the 45th Legislative District, we can actually get a capital budget in this state, and we can actually work to expedite how we can get those transit lines moving in and out. So buses, making sure that we expedite ST3, and actually asking our community what they want to see. Because I hear a lot in this community, especially, about how folks are driving in, parking their cars to get on rapid lines. I want to make sure that we're addressing that as well.
John?
Rocket packs for everyone. No, I think, you know, I agree with much of what was said. And I think that one of the big concerns we have here is that, I mean, you know, taking the bus from West Seattle, I mean, I live over in Reeder Valley, and trying to get the West Seattle public transit is a nightmare. We absolutely have to do more to better improve the east-west corridor so that people can actually access the transit spine that exists in Seattle. And rapid bus transit is definitely one thing that we need to expand and invest in. I think that also looking at how we can expedite permitting and bonding for our light rail systems so that we get light rail faster out to West Seattle, so we're not waiting the 20-plus years that it's going to take currently to do it. And, you know, I think also we give more people opportunities to live and work in their communities and give more affordable housing options right here in West Seattle so they don't need to commute in the first place. I think that that is a really important thing as well. My opponent brought up San Francisco, about, you know, the 25% affordability requirement not working there. Actually, it worked pretty well, and it wasn't until the developers pushed back and reduced it to 18% that that's how that happened. So San Francisco has an 18% affordable housing requirement. We have a 2% to 11% affordability requirement. You tell me who got the better deal in that. So I think that when we talk about these issues, again, we have to talk about how affordable housing, our transit infrastructure, all these things work together. We have to make sure that people can live and work in the same communities where they are.
Okay, final question.
Oh.
And I'm, my time goes quickly. So the final question is, ceaseless messes seem to be the pattern for governing. The sprawling 23rd Avenue disruption last year, and this year's Belltown paralysis, which has seen 2nd, 3rd, and 6th Avenue simultaneously ripped up, lanes closed on 4th Avenue, and the side streets like Clay and Cedar Block. What lessons can be learned from these projects that will benefit West Seattle when ESTA starts the Faltroy Boulevard project? Oh, I'm sorry, John, you go first.
So I think what we saw, what happened on 23rd Avenue, is that there were many women and minority-owned businesses that were disproportionately impacted. And it was like pulling, you know, teeth to get those business owners mitigation money for the fact that the foot traffic in front of their buildings and businesses just plummeted. Now, compare that to the businesses from, you know, along the waterfront, and that they got millions of mitigation dollars, right? I mean, we have to address that there was a real, I think, you know, racial disparity there in terms of how our city addresses the impacts on some businesses and then other businesses that are owned by people of color. So when we look at these impacts on Faltroy, and as we are seeing this plan move forward, we really have to keep an eye towards racial equity around these businesses that are going to be impacted, and making sure the city is a partner with those businesses in providing mitigation funds so that we don't lose some of the most cherished, you know, small businesses that make our communities the great places that they already live.
Well, I too have talked to folks who were around Reeder Valley when the light rail came in, folks who are on 23rd, folks in Belltown. They want to make sure that as construction happens, people know that they're still open for business. And I think we can do a lot to make sure that there's signs outside so that small businesses benefit from having people walk by. Because ultimately, if we get folks out of their car and they're walking by a small business, there's a chance that they're going to pop in. If we want to get folks out of their car, though, we have to have every transportation option available. We got to have buses, we got to have the light rail. We got to expedite how much we're investing into our community. We have to realize that this is going to cause havoc in some communities, and be prepared to ask the community what's working, what's not working. I don't know that there's a bullet to solve the complication that occurs when we do have lanes that are closed, but I'll tell you this. Today, I was stuck in traffic for the better part of an hour, and I saw multiple times full buses go by me. I saw the streetcar go by me packed. And it's because we created lanes that are working for moving people quickly in and out of our city. If we can do more investments like that, that stop at small businesses along the way, ultimately, our community's going to be better, our health is going to be better, our local economy's going to be good. But we have to ask folks what the impact of the policy changes are, and how we can mitigate against any negative impact when we do have construction, and make sure that it's less disruptive. But we want to grow the city and grow up together, done through our community voice. And that's what it looks like to ask the community to give feedback and be at the table constantly.
Okay, now it's time for closing statements, and John, you can go first on this one.
So I think that our city has some real opportunities right now to do something different. My campaign has put forward some pretty bold proposals. We have called for raising the corporate tax rate on some of our largest companies while giving small businesses a tax break to build 5,000 units of housing for the homeless in the next five years. That would effectively end unchallenged homelessness in our city. We've called for a 25% affordability mandate on all new development, because our city is growing, and we have to hold developers accountable and build more affordable housing. We have called for impact fees, because growth should pay for growth. And right now, we have kids getting taught their lessons in portables when they should be having their classes taught in classrooms. Now, when we talk about these things, impact fees, I mean, we have left hundreds of millions of dollars on the table. Now, these are things that we have been championing on this campaign trail, but we've also been developing policy with people who are directly experiencing these problems. We have been going out to homeless encampments and talking to them and asking them, "What do you all need?" And that is how we have formed these policies, by going to the people who are directly experiencing it. Now, as a city, I think we have a lot of opportunity, but we have to push back against interest groups that are holding us back. I think that if we can't get change at city hall, the grand bargain and the upzones and everything else that's coming down the pike, especially here in West Seattle, it's not going to get better. And we have to push back against the kind of political consensus that has been existing and holding us back as a city. So this city council race is really important. This seat is really going to determine whether or not we can push through some of those political obstacles that have been holding back this city from making big decisions to do real systemic change. I'm really honored to be endorsed in this race by Councilmember Lisa Herbl. She is someone who I've worked with for many years, and she believes in this same vision of doing something different. I've also been endorsed by former Councilwoman Nick Lacata, The Stranger, the Seattle Times, and the Seattle Weekly. These are things that we can do together, and I just really look forward to, you know, hopefully engaging with you more in the future. Thank you.
So thank you so much for holding this forum today. There's two words that were said at the very beginning of this forum that I think really resonated. You said that you were looking for folks who are going to show leadership. You were looking for serious leadership that would create the ability to network and work in coalitions to actually create positive change in our community. That is how I have always worked, whether it's fighting to make sure that all kids have health coverage, to making sure that workers are protected in the workplace, and fighting for retirement security for everyone. This is about serious leadership that I hope to bring to Seattle City Council, because this is, you know, Rome is on fire. We have a Trump administration that is intent on going after our basic protections, from our environment, to our workers, to the LGBTQ community, and small businesses. We have to work together to be both the last line of defense and the first line of offense, to think about how we lift up small businesses and create opportunity in our community so there's true shared prosperity, to think how we're going to have those teachers and janitors and librarians and tech workers all afford to live in our city, and that it's done through our lens, based on our conditions, and how we're going to address the homelessness crisis, which is a true public health crisis in our street. We can live up to our progressive values in Seattle if we have people on city council that are willing to work with others, willing to network, willing to show that strong leadership, and willing to stand up to people when necessary. I have done really progressive things like passing legislation in Olympia and city hall, but not by pounding my fists on the table. Definitely not like my opponent has done, by saying that he's not going to work with five out of nine council members. Now is the time for serious leadership. That's what I hope to do with your support. I have the support from Attorney General Bob Ferguson, Pramila Jayapal.